Good morning. It is Wednesday, March 21st. It is 10 o'clock and all three county commissioners here. I ask we rise for a moment of silent meditation and then we'll do pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the second day of spring and West Virginia's snowing. Could we have the consents and approvals now?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have 14 exonerations for $2,750.47. About for general county, 234, 227.56. Coal severance, 5,001, 1993. 911, 11,744.76. Chestnut Ridge Park, 781.45. Camp Muffley, 280.83. Sustures valuation, 1,755. Purchasing park vouchers for general county, 31,023 cents. 911, 10,575.21. Mason Dixon Park, 4,375. Sustures valuation, 642.49. Voucher total of 300,502.46. We have budget revisions that require state approval for general fund under law enforcement, prosecuting attorney, senior centers and health department, and under coal severance fund, social services. Physician vacancies for boards and authorities, the West Run Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, Chief View PSD, and River Road PSD. We have fiduciary orders for March 21st, 2018. And then there's a separate fiduciary matter that you guys can, we can take a minute to say.
Okay.
Move for approval, second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, how did, on the other, what is the specific name of the?
It's the Artis Scottua Estate.
Okay.
There's been an objection to the third accounting that was filed by the administer, Larry Sturcher. Keith Pappas, that was the former administrator, CTA, has filed an objection to the third accounting that was approved on March 7th.
Could I have a motion that would just, yeah?
Move to refer back to the fiduciary commissioner.
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, are there any introduction of new employees, personnel changes? Seeing none, do we have any comments from the public? Anyone coming down willing to jive through the snow? Okay, seeing none, before I ask Colleen to come up, I do want to have an announcement. Catherine Gunn, who is WBOY, who's been with us for the last year, has been an integral part of our county. I mean, you have been able to express and get out information, and I don't know if anyone else wants to say anything. She is moving on to where and what are you going to do?
I will be reporting and anchoring at my WBOY sister station, WTRF in Wheeling, West Virginia. So I'm staying in the mountain states. I like it so much after driving from Pennsylvania that I'm sticking around. And if anybody misses me too much, we do do a statewide show every day at 5:30, so I might be popping up there sometimes.
Well, we want to wish you the best of luck. Did anyone want to?
Ditto. It's been a pleasure working with you. You've been very fair and provided great coverage of the Commissioner in Montague County and all our citizens. Thank you.
Yes, I really thank you again. You've always taken great pains to make me look good. That I appreciate.
Which is very difficult to do.
Which is not the easiest task in the world. I understand that.
We wish you the-
We do wish you well. Hopefully that maybe we will get this Channel 12 and the Comcast situation rectified so that we, I will be able to see you at 5:30 on the statewide.
Well, that's awesome. Thank you, guys. I appreciate, you know, really everybody here. Not so jokingly, I always say that this was like the highlight of my week because I enjoy coming to see you guys. So thank you so much for always being cooperative and forthcoming with information as best and as much as you can. So I appreciate you. You made my job easy, so.
Well, thank you, and we wish you the best of luck, as all three of us have said. Moving on, Colleen Coon, do we have any grants? No, no grants, okay. Presentation, we would normally have had the Northern West Virginia Make-A-Wish, but due to the snow, they were unable to be here, so we'll hold off on that. We now have a presentation from the Montague County Solid Waste Authority. So if you want to come up to the table and then someone wants to speak at the podium, but if you would come up and just introduce yourself, and then, so we have it for the record.
Okay. I'm Bob McConnell. I'm Mont County Solid Waste Authority. Thanks for the opportunity for us to be here to talk a little bit about some of the things that we've been doing. What did I do? Did I drop my notes?
Sure did. I was going to say, that will make the presentation short.
Okay, with the, well, as you know, we are tasked with planning the solid waste disposal in the county and make sure it runs smoothly and so forth. With the changes we see coming in the population, a 30% growth over the next 20 years, projected growth, and the changes in the technology with solid waste disposal systems, we've undertaken a comprehensive study, we started a comprehensive study, I should say, to look at overall all of the solid waste, how it is disposed of, and what the effects are, specifically the economic effects and the environmental effects. Based on the results of some of the research, and by the way, a lot of this environmental research has been done primarily by downstream strategies, and the results of this research, we have seen some very interesting results. Particularly, one of the things that jumps out at us is the fact that the biggest environmental greenhouse gas coming from the landfills, even after they've attempted to capture the methane, has been the methane from the landfills. That swamps all other environmental effects that we've found so far. Now, once we've, once we take a look at that and try to eliminate that effect, we then notice the transportation to the landfill from Mont County is a very substantial part, almost a third of the total environment, other environmental effects. Now, once we take a look at that, that led us into looking at, well, what is the cost? How is the cost distributed from the disposal of the material? And it turns out the transportation cost is almost half of the total disposal cost, not counting the collection. The collection would be taking it to the transfer station, and from that point on, it would be considered disposal. This transportation cost and how it is, and how the total costs are distributed across the, from the user point of view, gives us some very interesting results, which you have seen on that piece of paper that we handed you earlier. These studies so far are really quite far from complete, and we're looking to expand that. We specifically are looking to look at the, how the recycling affects all of this, which we so far have not really looked into that very much. Okay, thank you. And right now, I think Evan, I believe, is going to talk a little bit about some of the, some of those effects.
Thank you. Well, thanks. I'm Evan Hansen. I'm president of Downstream Strategies. We're an environmental science and policy consulting company in Morgantown. And we've been working with the Mont County Solid Waste Authority for the last couple of years on a few phases of this project. To echo what Bob just said, most of the solid waste in Mont County is still going to landfills, and the transportation of the waste to landfills, and then the, the process that occurs in the landfills themselves create emissions, create greenhouse gas emissions that are significant. At the same time, the county's growing, so we're generating more waste. And the industry, the solid waste industry is, is changing as they start to think of the components of waste less as something to be disposed of, as more and more as something that can be a resource, to be reused in one way or another. And one way that can happen is by converting it to energy, and another way that that can happen is by recycling it into new products. The Solid Waste Authority has an interest in looking strategically over the long term into how the solid waste system in the county can be improved. And that's really the background for this series of reports. We started with a report on the possibility of a waste-to-energy plant and reported back to the county commission on that some time ago. That was phase one. And in phase two, we were tracking the, the economic factors that would lead to, to a decision about whether a gas-to-energy plant might be economical. And in phase three, which is the report that we're sharing with you today, we've looked at two different future scenarios for Mont County. One would be to dramatically increase the amount of recycling that's being done across the county, because we're actually recycling quite little compared to the rest of the country. And the second scenario was again, looking at the possibility of a waste-to-energy plant. Evan Fedorko is going to give you some more details about the, the results and the conclusions that we had, but I, the one last thing I want to say to set the stage is that we hope that we can open up a conversation through this process. Our conclusions are not laying out exactly what we think needs to happen, but we think we are laying out information that we gathered that would be helpful, not just for the Solid Waste Authority, but also for the county commission, for the cities, for the haulers, for everybody else that plays a role in collecting and disposing of and recycling our waste in Mont County, to hopefully come up with systems that are more efficient and cost-effective for people who pay for their cash disposal, and at the same time are good for the environment. That's what we're looking for here. And I think part of our request to you today is to work with us in this process, that we, we would like to start a series of meetings and have somebody from the county commission represented at those meetings. But I'll turn it over to Evan to talk about some of the more, some more of the details.
Again, my name's Evan Fedorko. I also work at Downstream Strategies. I have been working on this project from the very beginning, and I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the things that we found. This project started out, the, Bob in particular, was really interested in understanding, better understanding the environmental and economic impacts of various changes that could happen to the Mont County solid waste system. One fact that is not on any of these papers that I think is important to remember, and the kind of, the Mont County solid waste system, the big stop, the big kind of crunch point in the system is the transfer station. That transfer station is permitted to handle a certain amount of waste per month. That volume is 10,000 tons of waste. Recycling does not count against that, and so if there's 12,000 tons and 2,000 tons is recycled, 12,000 tons can still pass through the transfer station legally, as long as some of it is diverted off into recycling, 2,000 tons. The transfer station currently presses up against that limit every month, and every month more people move to Mont County, and every month more solid waste is coming into the county. In order to understand the potential environmental impacts and economic impacts of any change to that system, we had to really understand where trash and recycling was flowing through the county and where those monies went. That ended up being pretty difficult. It wasn't easy to do. It was a lot of information that we had to digest. I spent a lot of time on telephone, talking to a lot of different people, and we learned a whole lot of different things. There are, I think, five haulers in the county, and I worked closely with most of those haulers to get information in addition to other things. The conclusions and the things that we found, and I'm just going to go straight down through this sheet, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. Based on our best understanding of recycling in the county, only in about 5% of the county's solid waste is recycled, which is far below the national average of about 26%. Certain studies internationally and nationally have found that a far greater percentage of the solid waste stream is recoverable, either as recyclables or as organic material that can be used in digestors or just compost, but 26% is the national average for diversion by way of recycling, and we are far, far below that. Even in Morgantown, where we have curbside, single-stream recycling, I believe the diversion's only about 9% or 10%. WVU has achieved a higher diversion rate than that through some measures, but everywhere else is not. So, long-term recycling options for residents, there are no, I don't know what you would call it, very, there's no substantial options outside of the county commission's program for people who live outside of Morgantown, Star City, and Westover. That's an important thing to note, and depending on who you talk to, there's interest in that in some parts of the county. The current, the way that recycling works, the program that you guys run, and this is an interesting finding, the county commissions drop off recycling programs essentially subsidize haulers, because that's every ton of recycling that is collected by the county commission is a tipping fee that the haulers then do not pay at the transfer station. And that works out to approximately $44,000. And the Marion County Solid Waste Authority also runs a program in the western part of the county. They have two drop-off locations, I think, and they're considering a third. They subsidize haulers to the tune of approximately $22,000 a year. Any increase in recycling or in addition of a composting program, or anything that diverted trash away from going into plastic bags and going into the back of the trucks would again, continue to subsidize haulers and save haulers money. And in the case of Westover and Star City, that would save those city governments money because they run their own programs. They don't rely on a hauler. Those savings, those are essentially savings, and they're an opportunity to strategically improve the county's solid waste system. So what we looked at in terms of the scenario where we had a waste-to-energy facility, more specifically, we looked at a, two companies, one of which has this facility in West Virginia. They generate what is called process engineered fuel. Basically what it is, it's like your pellet fuel that goes into your wood stove, except it is made out of trash. And it's cleaned, dried, and processed in such a way that all the stuff you don't want to burn is removed, and the stuff you can burn is then pushed into kind of a pellet form. And so we modeled a facility like that for Mont County and said, if this facility existed and this facility took this much trash, what would that look like? That facility would then use its fuel into what's called a gasification system, and without getting into the details, it takes that fuel, that trash fuel, and turns it into a kind of natural gas derivative, and then uses it to generate electricity. And what we found is that that would divert a remarkable amount of, a small, relatively small operation compared to the operations of this type that exist elsewhere in the country, or in the world, I should say, would divert a remarkable percentage of the trash away from the transfer station and away from landfill. And it would also have the surprising effect of increasing the county's recycling rate because these facilities themselves separate the trash, separate and sort all this stuff so that the recyclables are recovered and then diverted before they're turned into process engineered fuel. Gasification facilities, however, are very, very high-risk investments. There are no operating solid waste-based gasification facilities in the United States, and there's only a few around the world, many of which are in non-verifiable countries. The economic impact of those facilities is unpredictable, though it, one, it's clear that the volume, the diversion of that volume of waste away from the Mountaineer Transfer Station would raise the eyebrows of the people who operate the Mountaineer Transfer Station. In terms of the, and this is getting into the weeds a little bit, facilities like this, whether they're generating process engineered fuel, or whether they're using solid waste in an incinerator, or any type of waste-to-energy facility, we weren't looking at incineration here, but for the purpose of this next point, they're all the same. Those facilities generate their revenue through tipping fees, the same way that the transfer station does. Electricity doesn't cost anything, even at the municipal rate, the kind of rate that you and I pay for electricity at our homes, no facility that takes in solid waste would generate revenue, operational revenue from the sale of electricity. The way they would generate revenue is to bring in trash and dispose of it in a way, in a different way. And that's the entire economic model of those. The last thing that we note is that, speaking to lots of people around the county, haulers and other folks who work in the solid waste, leaders, community leaders, government leaders, and just concerned citizens, there are people I would talk to in my free time, business owners, there is a lot of opportunity for the Mont County Solid Waste Authority to coordinate a new conversation in the county about ways in which to improve the efficiency of the solid waste system. We, as Evan said, we would like to help lead that process, and we believe that there, we'll, through that process, we could uncover new sort of important problems in the solid waste system that could be then addressed in a coordinated manner. If you guys have any questions, I think we'd be happy to answer them. And we, I do have one other copy of the full report here, if anyone needs one.
Go ahead. Yeah. I have a question for you. Not actually a question, but actually, your last statement, which I liked, the coordination among local governments under the leadership and so on. Have you any ideas of starting that? Because when we talk, it seems as though you only talk at the county, and the cities are very important in this. So has there been some movement towards that, or suggestions, or where we're at on that? Because that makes, you know, a lot of sense.
We're coming to you first, after this phase three report.
Okay, well, that's fine.
But we've, we've initiated the process to be in touch with the cities as well, because they need to be at the table.
Okay.
Together, in addition to the haulers, and potentially other people, too.
Yeah. Because I think that that is a very simple step that we can move forward on because there is no plan from the cities. It's just give it to Republic.
Well, Westover and Star City run their own operators.
Right.
It should be noted.
And Granville was, but their truck broke down, so they're now, they're actually working with Mountain State Waste, which is a smaller company out of PA.
Are you also, one more question, I apologize. Are you also where I have new numbers now? We started the electronic recycling program.
Oh, good, yeah.
And we do have numbers for you, like in January, 4,463 pounds, February, 8,760 pounds. So that's a bunch of tonnage that at least is getting out. So that is slowly increasing, and we'd really like to see more of that.
Yep.
But that's just something else that we could, I can send you those numbers.
That's very good information.
Okay.
I'm amazed at the statistics, that we're only collecting about 5%. The national average is 25, and especially that number you said in the city.
Yeah, that's surprising.
Which has the recycling, the curbside, but it's only 10%.
Yep.
Well, to, okay.
That's an interesting-
One of the really interesting things that we found in the city is that only about, was it just under 50 or just over? I think it was, right around, only around 50% of curbside customers in the city have been provided a recycling bin. And that, that is, that's a huge problem. The, not to speak for Paul Break, but Paul was quite surprised by that number. Yeah, I think that-
Well, I'm a city resident, and I've never been provided one.
Right. Yeah, when the single-stream program started, I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know how it happened.
Four, five years.
Yeah, it's been four or five years. A bin just appeared at my house, but I guess that didn't happen at everybody's house.
And that's the kind of issue that, if we all sat down together, that's a simple solution. It could, and that could double, you know, the recycling just on that.
Isn't WVU's basically more or less an enforcement issue that I believe the employees are required now to separate?
Yeah, great. The Tracy Nabenschuh of the Office of Sustainability did a bunch of independent research on her own about how institutions have managed to increase recycling, and essentially, the number one thing they found is that if employees are required to take out their own trash, and then they'll recycle more. And it worked. It had it, the numbers are, you can't understate the numbers, like, it was an incredible increase in recycling diversion at WVU with that simple change.
So shall we begin a roundtable discussion led by the Solid Waste Authority first?
I think that, yeah.
What's your recommendations?
Ask the Solid-
But do you, do you guys want to speak to that? I think, I think what we envisioned and what we had recommended to the Solid Waste Authority was, yeah, at least to begin convening meetings with key stakeholders.
And I'll be happy to keep on representing commission if that's-
Yeah, sure.
Okay, well, sure, the two commissioners.
Is that something, yeah, I asked. We don't want to supersede your authority by doing that.
Good morning. Thank you. Howard Howie. Been with them for 27 years, about ready to retire. Solid Waste Authorities and solid waste is just like any other organization. It's a hell of a lot more complex what the average person realizes. Within the next three years, we've got to upgrade and redo the siting plan. The siting plan, under our law, under our responsibility, will indicate whether we need another transfer station or whatever happens to be. You have to realize this, yeah. Republic, depends on whose name it's in, because it's really not, it's under allied waste. The same company can auto own two transfer stations. If Republic, if, if the projections is right, and, and they prove to be, and we increase our solid waste, which we are going to, we will exceed the limit of if everybody would take their trash to the transfer station. You have two options. Somebody else has got to command, a completely different individual, and build a transfer station if that's what we would recommend. And then it has to go through a state process. The other option is, is for allied waste, Republic, to put it on, we go to you. They have to go to you and request they go from 10,000 pounds to 30,000 pounds. That has to go into ballot.
Oh, really?
It has, that's state law. It has to go for the general public.
Okay.
So it's a lot more complex, so that's why we're looking for the future. I mean, there's no, there's no rocket scientists. You can see the development in the county. And that's why we want to go ahead, and these two gentlemen has done a tremendous job. We can, we can do it. You know, we are now no longer a revenue supporting income readily. We get, we get $26,000 a year off the, off the state. That's it. So, you know, we're limited to the number of hours we can open the, the office and the amount of work we can do. So we can't take all this stuff. We've asked for $20,000 from you all to help support this, and we'll, we'll put in 20,000. We've already spent $60,000 of our reserves. We don't have, we're not capable of generating revenue, and we have no intention to it. But these things are very, very important. It's going to show really what's going on. And I would caution everybody, you can say what you want to, single-stream recycling will increase your, your, your rate of recycling as far as going from the curb to, to the facility. You better dig in because it isn't recycled. They're not going to tell you that, but we have documentation to prove that roughly only 30% of what you recycle is recycled. So you're losing 70% anyway that's going to the landfill. It's, it's a lot more complicated than what people realize, and, and they're right. It's hard getting information out of individuals, but there's other alternatives. Technology's coming fast and furious, and people say, oh, it doesn't change. Well, stop thinking about it. 10 years ago, what could you do with a cellphone?
With all due respect, I would disagree with that. We have the documentation that shows how much from the county is being recycled, and we can show you that documentation. It concerns me when you, that statement is a little misinformation, and that, that concerns me greatly when you make that kind of a statement that 70% is not being-
When you've been in this 25 years.
I, I'm not here to argue. I'm here to show you what the facts-
I'm not going to argue with you either. I can get you other documents that show just enough.
And then I would appreciate that because-
Oh, we will.
That concerns me, that statement.
And you, we can, we can verify it.
Well, I would appreciate you-
Yeah, not for us, but for you, too, because we have to watch it. That, that's, that's a big difference.
Well, I think our next step here is to, you know, begin this discussion with the, with the various leaders to see what we can do.
Have you asked at all any funds from the city, since they are also part of?
Asked a couple of times before and was told no. We just never got nowhere with it. So we didn't go back.
Okay.
But yeah, the city plays a major role. You're right, Tom. It does.
Yes, so we'd like them part of the, the solution. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Evan. Evan and Evan. What are the chances of two Evans in there? Thank you. Unfinished business? Okay. Moving on, new business. Consideration of the approval of poll work is submitted by Mont County Republican Executive Committee for the 2018 primary election to be held on May 8, 2018. Carrie? Since, we did the Democrats, is that correct?
Yes, it is our, last week. And now, the Republican Executive Committee has submitted their sheets and I- And now, the Republican Executive Committee has submitted their sheets, and I, we just need an approval from the County Commission to accept them, and then our office will send out our letters.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Well, if I may, Commissioner, while I'm also here, we did get our fiscal year 17 financial statement back from the state auditor's office, and it will be published in the newspaper. I don't believe you need a motion on that, because we already contracted with the state auditor's office to do it. But they did send it to us. It will be published in the newspaper, along with the vendor list, and I have provided Renetta with a copy of all that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
To consider approval, requisition number one for the University Town Center EOODD Subordinate Special District Excise Tax Revenue and Improvement Bond Series 2017B Project Fund.
So this is the subordinate bonds. This is not the senior bonds that you would normally approve. So this is the first requisition. The requisition total is $6,625,512. And this is expenses that were incurred by the developer, and they have already paid those expenses to their vendors, and they are drawing down on the bond. So the money isn't going directly to the developer, it's going to pay back the bond.
Yes.
Okay. So this is the first requisition for that.
Move for approval?
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other new business?
I did have one other piece that came in. This would be another expense for the University Town Center Economic Development District. This is requisition for payment number five, in the amount of $3,226.25 Administrative Expense Fund for Unicap that's doing our review of administering the.
Move for approval?
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Passes? Okay. Reports from elected officials. Carrie, I don't see nothing. Okay. Sean, reports from county commissioners?
This week, we'll finish up our budget meetings, and hopefully be ready to approve our budget next week, but we've got a lot of additional meetings, so it's been a really busy couple of weeks. Beginning with, since we last met, we had our community leaders meeting last Wednesday. On Thursday, I had a Alliance Executive Committee meeting, and also we had our MMPO meeting at night. And again, as I said, Friday, we had some budget meetings. This week, Monday, we had more budget meetings. I had lunch with the sheriff on Monday. Yesterday, I had lunch with the county clerk. And I also went to the Board of Education meeting last night with Don Robinson to talk about the baseball classic. So, and that was received very well. The rest of the week, we have a Morgantown area economic partnership meeting tomorrow, Alliance Executive Committee meeting tomorrow, and hopefully at night, if I can make it, I'll go to the Suncrest Neighborhood Association. Friday's our last budget meeting, and of course, next Friday is when W plays Villanova, so don't forget that. And that's really pretty much about it. It's been, again, I appreciate all the elected officials with, it's been a pleasure sitting through the budget meetings and working to our final budget, and appreciate everybody's extra time, especially Renetta, all your effort to that end.
I will add to that, on behalf of all the sheets that Sean has passed across to me, I, I have this great big pile in front of me that has been reorganized by Colleen. His, his aid in this process has been immeasurable, okay? So that, that's, you know, it should be noted, in addition to Renetta, what, what the work both of them do. So, yesterday, I did meet with head of extensions, Steve, to discuss generally our project of relocating the extension office. Last night was the Fireman's Association meeting in Blacksville. It was a great presentation that was given by Donnie Williams, relative to what goes on in the western Edinburgh County, relative to the, the road situation. And he handled and fielded all the questions excellently, I must say. Monday evening, 4H Camp Park Board met, and of course, Sean said, we did have the, we had the MMPO meeting as well last week, as well as a community forum. But on Friday evening, the Historical Society met, and they did vote to sponsor a plaque that will honor the fallen soldiers of the Civil War on both sides of the war between the states. I think this is the last plaque that hopefully we can place on the Veterans Memorial Square, because it really does state the fact of this is, you know, this is the war, the conflict of which our state was born. So I'll be presenting verbiage to that. I told them I would write it, and then submit it for their approval for design after that at our May meeting. So that's my report.
Okay. Basically, yes, we're finalizing the budget, and I'm looking forward to actually coming up with some suggestions and solutions for our future. I think, I, I agree, I have to give Sean Score enormous amount of credit, where the state auditor's going to come up with the West Virginia checking account. We, we approved the Mon County checking account. I think one of the real reasons it is so easy for us is because Sean has done much of the work already, so we're going to be able to feed it in and then have Carrie do it. I also want to thank Carrie Blaney, because she allowed us to use the election facility for the food giveaway. We have 199 families and 796 people that benefited from it, and we continue to do that once, once a month. And the final thing is, we've had several people here ask questions about the EMS and the discussions, and we have that on our work session in this afternoon. So with that, is there any other thing?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Proper move, second. We're adjourned. Thank you.